I call this the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to meeting. This is August 17th, 2021. At this time, I will ask Brother Winfred Staton, he's the minister at the Gum Springs Baptist Church, and Mr. Jimmy White. Jimmy's the son of Jamie and Daisy Clardy White. He's a senior at RCA while doing dual enrollment at Motlow. Jimmy's in the 4-H Honor Club. He's a member of the FFA and treasurer there, member of the Foreign Bureau, the Lincoln County Livestock Association, and the Tennessee Livestock Association. He plans to attend the University of Tennessee at Martin and pursue a vet science degree. If y'all would stand at this time for invocation and our pledge, please.
May I take just a moment to publicly thank our officials? In last year's height of the COVID, due to guidelines that were set before us, we were able to stay open as a house of God. And Mayor, I want to thank you and the commission and each one that's involved. We do appreciate that. Let us pray. I follow in our God in the name of Jesus. We approach the throne of grace once again with grateful hearts. We're thankful, Heavenly Father, because we realize that you're God and beside thee there's none other, and we realize, Almighty God, that you're the Creator of the ends of the earth and you're the giver of all good and perfect gifts and sustainer of life. Most holy Father, we want to bless your great name, for you tell us in your word to bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless your great name. We were put here to bless you, Father, and therefore, as we call upon your wonderful name, we know that you are prayer answering God. You've answered many of our prayer. You've done everything, Lord, that's been beneficial unto us. You've kept us, Lord, provided for us through all the troubles and trials of life and through all the coronaviruses and through the many things that have befallen us as a people, Lord. I want to bless you and thank you for it all and pray now that you will help us as we've come together this afternoon, Lord, that we might do according to the purpose and plan to the commission and the mayor, the business of the people. I pray on their behalf. I ask you, Heavenly Father, to anoint them in their decisions, help them to be the decision that's pleasing and acceptable before you. We realize, dear God, that there's many things that wants to hold us down, but I'm so glad your word tells us, Father, that when the Son sets us free, glory to God, we're free indeed, and, Father, we claim that freedom tonight. We realize, Heavenly Father, that we can have what you have designed for us, for you said, if we'd seek first the kingdom of God and your righteousness, then all these things would be added unto us. We bless you for it, Father. We believe you for the miracle, and we know that you're anointing. It's so real, Father. May it be upon each believer's life and help us to have greater faith, more trust, and help us, Holy Father, to walk before you according to your plan and purpose. We have no desire to be anywhere else. We desire tonight, we desire tomorrow, if it's our lot to be here. Heavenly Father, that your will would be carried out in our lives so that you can bless our efforts, Lord, and supply our every need according to that beautiful riches that you have younger in the storehouse of heaven. Bless Heavenly Father in happier way. We thank you for Jesus and our salvation and for the simple fact, Lord, that we're still able to come forth in your name, for your honor and your glory. Blessed again, Father, this nation, it needs mercy, Lord. It's certainly under judgment, but it needs mercy, Father, and we claim your mercy, for you said your mercy's new every morning. And gracious, Lord, you're faithful. So, Lord, I ask for mercy on behalf of our nation. I pray for the judicial system. I pray, Heavenly Father, Lord God, not only for that, but for the federal and the state and the county, of course, and the city and each one that's in authority. Help us, Lord, that we will administer for your glory first and foremost and for the benefit of the people. In the name of Jesus, I make this prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you, Reverend Winfred. At this time, if you would, answer the roll call.
I have 22 commissioners present, three absent.
Twenty-two present, three absent.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do we only have 24?
Okay, thank you. Couple of announcements. One is relating to our guest tonight. We have back here Tegan Holt, and one of the things that RCA does each year, and they auction off a day with a mayor. I don't know that it's worth what they pay for it, but still, I'm proud to be able to be a part of it. And Tegan Holt, in the middle there, she, her parents, and her grandmother may have had something to do with it. Her grandmother is Ms. Patsy Freeman. Ms. Patsy was the executive secretary of South Central Human Resources for a bunch of years, and she carried that agency and did a lot of good for not only Lincoln County, but the South Central District of Tennessee. So, thank you, Tegan Holt, for whoever put up the money for you to spend the day with me. She is just here tonight, but we got a day in September. She's going to spend the whole day. And as her guests, Daniel Black and Ava Pendgrass. Thank y'all for helping us, so let's give them a hand tonight. Just a word about kind of where we are on our COVID. Today's numbers, and if you kept up, Lincoln County, we're not in an enviable position far as our active cases. We have the most cases of any county in southern middle Tennessee. As of today, we have 305 active cases. That's up 43 from Friday. So, that was really a two-day extra period there. And three weeks ago, excuse me, two weeks ago, we had 133 active cases. Last week, on the same date, we had 221, and today, like I said, 305. The Delta variant is much more contagious than the Alpha, which we originally with. And the numbers yesterday out of Vanderbilt, when they were talking about the number of people who get infected for each singular case of that, back when we were mainly dealing with the Alpha, the original variant, it was for average of one to four people would get infected for each single person that had the disease. The Delta, it's from five to 10 people that are catching it from a single person. So, you see how it's spreading very fast. The vaccine does work. Most of the breakthroughs are people that have an immune deficiency. The effectiveness is somewhere around 89% for the people that have been vaccinated. So, check with your physician or your medical advisor. It's a safe one, and over one to a million cases that there is a problem. So, it's one of the things we need to be looking at because it's getting in a serious situation where we are now. Other things, the Richardson option, our attorney's films, we have not signed off on that, but everything is agreed upon that, and that will be signed probably tomorrow. If you haven't registered for the Fall Conference in Memphis, that's in November, please do that. You need to do that yourself, but if you need advice, call our office. One other thing backing up on the COVID. If you or someone you care about does get sick, please contact your physician or the ER. The monoclonal antibody infusion works, and it works to the effect that you're probably not going to get very sick, but you need to do it early on in the disease process for that to be effective. There's been some discussion about the third dose booster, and for those people who do have an immune response that's not up to par, you need to be talking to your physician about that also. Any questions on that? I'd be happy to try to answer that on any of those things that we talked about. The July 20th commission meeting, I would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes at this time. Mr. Bradford makes a motion. Commissioner Young seconds. Any questions on those? All in favor of approval, the way they were printed, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. There were 16 monthly and seven quarterly committee meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion, acknowledge receipt of those at this time. Commissioner Hunter makes that motion, seconded by Commissioner Revis. Any questions on any of those? All in favor of acknowledging the receipt of those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. This time, I'll turn the program over to our chair pro temp, Commissioner Doug Cunningham.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Lincoln County Commission.
Nominate Bill Newman.
I have a nomination. Do Mr. Graham, nominate Mr. Chairman?
I'll nominate Newman.
Yes, sir. Okay. Bill Newman has been nominated for chairman of the Lincoln County Commission. Are there other nominations?
I'd like to postpone that motion.
Has motion that all nominations cease and that he be elected by acclamation? Okay. Is there a second to that? Second to that? All right, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. All right, this time, we'll have to have a roll call vote. According to state law, we have to, you actually have to say Newman. Can we, we can't do that on the system, can we? Okay. You have to say the word Newman. So, turn it over to the clerk.
Graham, Sanders, Walker, Revis, Thorpe, Ashley, Guin, Mitchell, Bradford, Hunter, Cunningham.
Newman.
Haynes, Young, Bryant, Douglas, Guntherberg, Jean, Ogle.
Newman.
I have 21 for Newman, three absent.
Have 21 votes for Chairman Newman. This time, I'd like to turn the chair back over to Mayor Newman.
Thank you, and I appreciate whether it's confidence or should be whatever. I do appreciate, you know, being able to serve in this position, and I hope I do a good job, and it's pleasing to y'all and the public. Now, we're ready for the election of chairman pro temp for the county legislative body. Do I hear nominations for that? Commissioner Jeans makes the nomination of Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Do I hear a motion that nomination cease and he be elected by acclamation? Commissioner Bryant makes that motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Britt makes a second to the motion for acclamation. All those in favor of acclamation, electing Commissioner Cunningham, please say aye. Any opposed, no. We have a roll call vote at this time stating who you'd like to vote for. If it's Commissioner Cunningham, please say Cunningham.
Ogle.
Cunningham.
Jean.
Cunningham.
Guntherberg.
Cunningham.
Douglas.
Cunningham.
Bryant.
Cunningham.
Young.
Cunningham.
Haynes.
Cunningham.
Cunningham.
Dangerfield.
Cunningham.
Britt.
Cunningham.
Spray.
Cunningham.
Hunter.
Bradford.
Cunningham.
Mitchell.
Cunningham.
Guin.
Actually.
Thorpe.
Revis.
Walker.
Sanders.
Graham.
20 in favor of Commissioner Cunningham as pro temp.
Congratulations, Commissioner Cunningham. The next five items are appointments and reappointments. Is there any objection for taking those five together? If there is, just say yes, and we'll take them individually. I will read them. Seeing none, we'll take those together. Number one, consideration for approval to reappoint David Sanders, Randy Bradford, Shirley Dangerfield, and Danny Walker to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee. That term would expire September 2022. Number two is consideration for approval to appoint Dr. Theresa Morrison to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee to replace Agnes Marie Barnes. Term expires September 2022. Number three, consideration for approval to appoint Matt McAuliffe to the Records Committee. That term expires September 2022. Number four, consideration for approval to reappoint Ernie Morgan, Randall Slaton, and Brian Rutledge as judicial commissioners. Term expired, two expire September 2022. And number five, consideration for approval to reappoint Randy DeLapp, Betty Creson, and Brenda Rolls to the Three Star Housing Committee. Those terms would expire also September 2022. What's the will of commission on these five items? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Spray seconds that. Any questions, comments? All in favor of approving those, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay. Point of clarification on the Ethics Committee, I'll get Diane or Dore to contact those members to see when a convenient time for y'all to meet, and that will be published in the newspaper where y'all can meet initially, elect officers, and then with any business that may become before you. The next four items is Ms. Nancy Harris.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, we held the public hearing for these cases. First one is case number 2021 R3, rezoning request for the northwest corner of Winchester Highway and Elora Road from A1 Ag Forestry Rule Residential to C1 General Commercial. There were no comments during the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions now?
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Okay.
Commissioner Walker made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Thorpe. Was that correct? Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Ms. Harris?
Second is case number 2021 R4, also a rezoning request for a portion of the parent parcel located at 22 Boone Road in Taft. The portion is equivalent to 0.90 acres. Request to rezone from A1 to A2, which is suburban residential, and that portion, the .90, is just being added to existing developed land currently zoned A2. This was also held public hearing with no comments. Any questions?
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Walker seconds that. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Nancy, did you say A2 to C2?
No, A1 to A2.
A1 to A2, thank you.
Okay. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Ms. Harris?
Third is file 2021 R5. This is to establish a zoning district located at 148 Morton Drive. This particular area had no zoning district applied to it when the zoning map was adopted, keeping it in the urban growth boundary, which is a growth plan, not a zoning district. The request is to apply the A1 zoning classification, which is Ag Forestry Rule Residential, to mirror the adjacent lands. This was held during a public hearing as well with no comments. Any questions at this time?
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Revis makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Spray seconds that. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Ms. Harris?
Last is a request to call for a public hearing at your September 21st meeting at 5:30. This is file number ZR 2021-2. This is to amend the portion of the zoning resolution, Article 3, Section 3.060, standards for telecommunications antennas and towers. You should have a staff report in your packet explaining what this is. Any questions?
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Will approve.
Mr. Ogle makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter makes a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Did you have an interjection?
No. I didn't hear you did the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion was unanimously approved. Thank you. Next item, consideration for approval to change the name of Stanford Holler Road to Story Road. This was approved by Highway Committee. Any questions on this? Mr. Thorpe makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Walker seconds. Any questions or comments? This is a road that's in District 2, correct? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Next item, IDB report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dempsey was unable to make it, Mr. Chairman, so he asked that I make some comments in his place.
Okay, yes, sir.
Kind of threw this together, so have to bear with me. Good evening, fellow commissioners and citizens of Lincoln County. Hadn't had an industrial report in a while, so we've got a bunch of activity that we kind of need to catch up on over the past year. Before I get started, I want to thank Jack Marsh and Bonnie Hereford. Both just finished terms as IDB board members. Jack served a full six-year term. Bonnie actually served almost a term and a half, close to eight, over eight years, actually. Both of these individuals were very involved in our industrial development program is a better place due to their leadership. People just don't realize how many hours that they put in there. So, thank you, Jack and Bonnie, for all your work. I want to begin tonight's update by kind of reviewing the status of our industrial parks. We'll start with the Bullington Industrial Park, and that park is located out on the Winchester Highway. It's where Frankie and Motlow College are. Frankie has expanded their Lincoln County operations this year. They've spent $1.3 million on this expansion and have added 56 jobs. They now employ 375 people. This is Frankie's fourth expansion since they've been here in Lincoln County about 25 years ago. They're hiring today. CNS Plastics is also out there. They are on the verge of starting an expansion. They're making a $2.8 million investment in Lincoln County, and they plan on adding 25 more jobs. They currently employ about 150 people. This is CNS Plastics' third expansion since they began operations here in 2003, and they are also hiring. Let's skip on out to the Fayetteville-Lincoln County Industrial Park. This is on out to Winchester Highway. This park was purchased in 2000 for $1.2 million. We didn't do much with this park until 2010, and with the arrival of Elaine Middleton as our director, that same year, we began to make some real progress as far as getting the infrastructure needed to make this park a viable place for companies. In the last year, JCF Hausmanns, which specializes in premier manufactured homes, had announced the selection of Fayetteville and Lincoln County for its southern manufacturing facility. JCF has invested $10 million in Lincoln County, and they currently employ about 110 people, and we expect that number to increase. In 2020, late last year, the IDB began construction of a 50,000-square-foot spec building out there at this park. This $3.2 million investment was paid for by the IDB. They did not come to city and county and request funds. This building is not quite completed yet, but it does have a buyer and is under contract. So, this is something that we'll be discussing here a little bit later, in a later date. Lot 5, which is out there, is a 32-acre tract. It's also currently under contract, and that's something else that we'll be discussing here in the future. Copperwell has expanded into the Aggracel Building, and that's the old Napon Steel Building, and they've currently set up operations out there, created 44 new jobs and a $14 million capital investment. They have a new product line that, using residential wire, and they've also got some wire that's going to be used in electric vehicles in the future. So, the sales have been tremendous for these new products, and they currently employ, I think, about 130 people at their main plant. Now, it's going out to Park City and Runway Center Industrial Park. This property was purchased in 2011, bought 110 acres for $500,000. Seven years later, the IDB had developed this park with all the necessary infrastructure and sold two lots, which covered the cost of our initial investment. I want to kind of refresh your memory here a little bit. In 2019, the IDB was awarded the site development grant of $500,000 to grade and prepare a site at Runway Center. This grant was combined with a $257,000 TVA Invest Prep grant, and this was all to create a 200,000-square-foot pad-ready site on 26 acres. And this pad-ready site is kind of a must these days to meet the increasing speed-to-market needs of industries, and we've had a lot of interest in this property. Last year, the IDB also invested $21,000 in a gas line extension in this park, and they also received a $30,000 USDA grant for industrial park signage. So, we've got a lot of activity at Runway Center. This year in 2021, we currently have a 10-acre tract that is under contract. So, once again, this will be something that we'll be discussing just a little bit later. I want to thank each and every one of you county commissioners. We will, due to y'all, we will soon have a new park. Out on out on Huntsville Highway, closer to the state line, this site holds great promise, and it was a move that will help facilitate a lot of new jobs in the future. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for your foresight in approving that purchase. We also have some other industrial properties within the county, and people ask me about these all the time, and I guess they think we kind of control them, but all those are, all these are privately owned. Let's start with the Dakin Goodman Building. That's something that a lot of people ask about. Last year, Direct Coal purchased the 695,000-square-foot building for its first U.S. manufacturing facility. They're a Canadian company. They created 75 jobs, invested $14.1 million in Lincoln County. They're using 150,000 square feet of this big building, and the IDB is currently marketing that available space for them. Eversafe is leasing space in the Avery Terminal for its security solutions product manufacturing. Frido Lay is now leasing the small Goodman Building, and this is Frido Lay's most recent expansion. Frido Lay's had several expansion products, projects, excuse me, investing more than $100 million in Lincoln County. They've created hundreds of new jobs. Matter of fact, they currently employ over 900 people out there, so they are our largest manufacturing employer. An investor from New York has purchased the old Lee Jean Building, and it's currently making upgrades to this building in preparation for potential clients. The Goggin Warehouse is being used by Goggin to serve logistical needs for two of its clients, and this includes Amazon out of Huntsville. The IDB is also involved in other projects. They've got some educational projects that they help train our They've got some educational projects that they help train our workforce. The Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development announced recently that the IDB had been awarded a $24,000 three-star grant to purchase equipment for a cybersecurity program at Lincoln Central Academy. They also announced a $39,000 three-star grant to purchase welding equipment to establish a TCAT welding program at Lincoln Central Academy. The Board is also assisting TCAT, Fayetteville High School, and Lincoln County High School with applying for a Give 2.0 grant. And this grant would be used to establish welding training at these schools that will serve multiple industries here in Lincoln County by creating a pipeline of welders for the workforce. Welding is a highly sought-after skill for several of our industries, existing industries. So, that's something that young people can take a look at because they're needing those folks out there and they're paying those folks well. So, the Board continues to see a steady flow of requests for information, what they call RFIs, from the state and TVA. They've also seen an increase in the direct contacts from some of these companies, and they're real estate brokers who are getting in touch with us about possibly moving their company to the southeast. The IDB is in there pitching Fayetteville and Lincoln County every day. And Elaine Middleton, our director, and Emmylou Porter, they're wonderful at what they do. Think we're positioned really well for the future, and our future looks bright. Anybody have any questions? Be happy to answer them. If I don't know the answer, my gosh, I'll get you an answer tomorrow. Questions? I do not. I was out there the other day, and man, it's a big, it's a big area. But, of course, that thing was, it was a big deal for Lincoln County to get that. As I recall, it's going to produce enough power to service 30,000 homes. And it's very important from the standpoint that you have a lot of companies out there that really want to be green, I guess, going in the future, and they can look at Lincoln County and say, gosh, you know, here's a county that's got a big solar farm, and they're trying to do these things. So, you know, it's very important in helping us, you know, sell a lot of these companies. Of course, we deal with a lot of companies from Europe and out west, and a lot of those companies, you know, that's something that they have on their list that you've got to check off. You better have some green ways of doing business, whether it be solar or whatever. But I'll try to find out when that's going to be operational out there. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item, Budget Committee Report. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Budget Committee Meeting Report for the August 17th, 2021 Regular Session of the Board of Commissioners. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, met present to due notice in the Library of the Lincoln Central Academy on August 3rd, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Members present: Steve Graham, Shirley Dangerfield, Ricky Bryant, Kate Ewing, Doug Cunningham, Randy Bradford, Donnie Ogilvy. Members absent was Gregory Davis. Others present were Finance Director Vicki Trenum, County Attorney Ed Sims, Commissioner Charles Hunter, Commissioner Steve Sprague, Commissioner David Sanders, Commissioner Stephanie Britt, Register of Deeds Randy Delap, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell, Industrial Development Board IDB Executive Director Elaine Middleton, Josh Richardson, Jeff Bradford from the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, and Solid Waste Director Dana Gentry. Item 1, Fire EMA Director Doug Campbell. EMA Director Campbell stated that the commission approved the funding to buy a new vehicle in the amount of $30,000. He could not get a vehicle on the state contract with a tow package for that price. The closest they can get is a Ford F-150 at a cost of $31,250, or a F-250 with a tow package and everything for $31,168. With the difference being the 3/4 ton and a half ton only being $82, the most cost-effective purchase was decided to be the F-150. We had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of increase in account number 101-54410-718 by $1,250 to allow EMA Director Campbell to purchase the 2021 F-150 off a state contract.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 2, County Mayor Newman. Information item, Wells Hills Park, Joy Legan Park, update regarding grant funds and local match being used with private pledge of $75,000. Meeting in Lewisburg about COVID money with the controller, and it was emphasized to go slow with decisions on spending. The final ruling about how the money can be spent will be out in September. Lincoln County has received its first half of the funds deposited at First National Bank, and we're receiving a small amount of interest. Mayor Newman recognized Randy Delap. Item 3, Register of Deeds. Randy Delap spoke to the committee regarding the need for additional space for archives. Mr. Bryant suggested the old police building. Further discussion was had referencing the additional work that would have to be done versus a new metal building that would meet the safety code requirements, and COVID funds could be used to fund this project. Mayor Newman will be in touch with Dixon County Mayor on how they justify their COVID money for the archive's building. Had a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed seven yes, one absent to recommend approval of the Records Commission to get possible building options and costs that would be feasible to house all the archive records as well as space for office staff and bring these options back to the next Budget Committee meeting.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move approved.
Commissioner Ogilvy makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Young seconds it. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 4, IDB Executive Director Elaine Middleton and the Copperwell Pilot. Ms. Milton presented the Copperwell Pilot Agreement recommended by the IDB at its last meeting. They are only seeking a pilot on the building, land, which means they will be paying taxes on the $10 million of equipment. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed seven yes, one absent to recommend approval of the Copperwell Pilot Agreement.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 5A, Body Scanning System. Jeff Bradford presented the Body Scanning System, approved in the amount of $161,500 at the July 8, 2021 Law Enforcement Committee meeting, and stated COVID money could be used to purchase this piece of equipment. The price would include training and two-year warranty with an option for an additional $7,500 for three additional years warranty that is included. It was noted that Dyer, Sumner, Sumner, Shelby, Murray, and Wilson Counties are using this Body Scanning System. Commissioner Bryant suggested, since COVID money is federal funds, precautions should be taken if piggybacking off of another county's bid. Had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, passed five yes, two no, one absent, to recommend approval of the purchase of the Body Scanning System.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Ewing makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Guntherberg makes a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Graham?
I did, I checked with Dyer and Sumner. There was quite a bit of difference. Dyer did not have the temperature scanning on it, which was itemized in hours to be $10,000 per unit on it, and there was two units. They paid $100,000 for their unit. Sumner, he didn't say an exact quote, and I did not get an email back, but he said it was somewhere around $150,000. When I've asked the question about the COVID money, the temperature scanning thing probably does fall under what would qualify, but I'm not real sure about the rest of the machine. But there were discrepancies in what different counties paid for that exact machine. Dyer and Sumner were the two that I talked with. Any other? Yes, sir.
Been a motion to table. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Sprague. All those in favor of tabling, please say aye. Well, let's see. Is that, where's? Where is, where is my? Is that a 2/3s vote to table or a simple majority? Simple majority. Okay. All in favor of tabling, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay. All those in favor, raise their hand. I have 14. There will be, raise your hands again, we'll write the names down.
Raise the no's, raise the no's.
Okay. Those voting no. Okay. Guntherberg, Douglas, Young, Ewing, and Britt.
So, I have on no, Guntherberg, Douglas, Young, Ewing, and Britt.
Dangerfield, too.
And Dangerfield is no.
Okay. Is that all the no votes? Motion to table passes. Next item.
5B, Sheriff's Department's Annual Clothing Allowance. Jeff Bradford presented the annual Sheriff's Department Clothing Allowance. Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached annual Sheriff's Department Clothing Allowance.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Ewing makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Hunter makes a second. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 6A, 2022 Employee Health Insurance Premiums. They're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ogilvy, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of Option 3, where the county absorbs the 4.4% increase in premiums.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Sanders makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Sprague seconds that. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
6B, Resolution Authorizing Issuance of General Obligation Capital Outlay Notes. Had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of financial advisors to move forward with draft of the capital outlay note with a purchase agreement to present for commission approval on financing of purchase of approximately 130 acres with $1 million down payment, financing of $2,620,000. This includes issuance of $20,000. Only 10-year note with no early prepayment penalty after four years. Financial advisor will competitively solicit bids amongst local banks, including the seller.
Okay. On this, I'm going to ask for a motion for approval on this. Then you had the resolution, the complete resolution in your packet, and then following this, I will ask for an approval of that packet. Ashley's here to answer any questions you may have. Do you have any questions at this time? Okay, I'd ask for a motion for approval of what Commissioner Ogilvy just read. Commissioner Revis makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions? All in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Then in your packet, you have the Complete Resolution Authorizing Issuance. It's towards the back of your packet, and it looks like it's 13, 14 pages long. Here's where it falls in your packet. I would entertain, or Ashley could answer any questions on that, but I would entertain a motion approving that resolution at this time if that's what the commission would like to do.
Move approved.
Commissioner Cunningham makes a motion. Commissioner Bryant seconds. Any questions on what we're voting on? All in favor of approval of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 6C, 101 General Fund Budget Amendments. Had a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the 101 General Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Mr. Revis seconds it. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 6D, 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Had a motion by Commissioner Ogilvy, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached 141 General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Revis seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
E, Property Assessor's Surplus Vehicle. Had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Ogilvy, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend approval of the attached Property Assessor's Surplus Vehicle.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Mr. Bradford makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Item 6F, Lincoln County Dead Stock Removal Service Agreement. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed six yes, one no, one absent, to recommend approval of the Lincoln County Dead Stock Removal Service Agreement.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Young makes that motion. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, Commissioner Ewing, anyone else? Commissioner Ewing, anyone else voting no? Commissioner Ewing voting no. The rest are yes. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 6. G. Financial Reports. We had a motion by Commissioner Ewing, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed seven yes, one absent, to recommend acceptance of the attached financial report.
Do I have a motion for acceptance from the Commission floor? Commissioner Douglas makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter seconds. Any questions on the financials enclosed? All in favor of acceptance, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Ogilvy.
Item 7. There being no further business to be presumed, we had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, asked to adjourn, respectfully submitted to the August 2021 Regular Session of the County Legislative Body. Steve Graham, Chairman, Donnie Ogilvy, Secretary, Vicki Trenum, Recording Secretary. That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ogilvy. Next item, Nova Republic's. Madam Clerk.
Natalie Askins-Russell by Commissioner Britt, Colby Wayne Sumners by Commissioner Ashley, Kyler King by Commissioner Cunningham, Patricia Smith by Commissioner Cunningham, Vanessa Bates by Commissioner Sanders, Renee Roberts by Commissioner Jean, Louis Blazewell and Stacy Older by Commissioner Brown, and Cindy Murphy by Commissioner Revis.
Okay. Any additions? I'd entertain a motion for approval of that list, then. Commissioner Bradford makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. We're now open for new business. I would request this. We're now, we got our numbers. I don't know if you've heard, our Lincoln County census, we are 35,319 strong now in Lincoln County. And the legislature will soon be making suggestions far as our redistricting of our representative district. We are a whole in our senatorial district, but it's been over 30 years since Lincoln County has been whole. You know, my first request is that we be made whole and that Pat Marsh be our representative. But that's probably not going to be possible with keeping Bedford County whole. I would like for us at this time, if the Commission sees fit, for us to pass a resolution requesting that Lincoln County be made whole again as a legislative district. More than likely, that's going to mean putting Lincoln County with Marshall County and combining Moore, because otherwise Bedford County would have to be divided, and the northern half of it be put with Rutherford. And whether that would be acceptable to them, I doubt it. But that doesn't matter. I would request a resolution, if this Commission sees fit, that Lincoln County request we be put back in our representative district, where Lincoln County would be one district.
Will be approved.
Commissioner Ogilvy makes that motion. Commissioner Douglas seconds. Any questions? All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved, and we'll get that sent out and done. Okay. Recognize, Commissioner Douglas. Okay. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The microphone is yours. And we usually limit to five minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, and I'll keep my comments brief. My name is Lisa Fitzgerald. My husband and I live at 288 Kelso-Smithlin Road. We've owned this property for approximately 22 years and have lived there for over 14 years. If you're unfamiliar with this area, Kelso-Smithlin Road is off of Highway 64 in the east area. The road is about 3.7 miles long and has roughly 18 permanent homes on it, and there's some other landowners as well. We have a Watercrest Farm and cattle farm, and people that just own temporary buildings and that sort of thing, cottages on the river there. It's my understanding that most of the property along the road used to be a large farm that was divided into parcels and then auctioned off. This was in the late 90s. It's no longer, nor has been for quite some time, just a farm road. Yet the majority of that road is still gravel, about 2 and 1/2 miles of it. Part of it was tar and chipped some years ago, but the other remaining portion is still gravel. You can hardly imagine the amount of dust that is created by the traffic on this road. By dust by the local residents that go down it daily, commercial vehicles such as the Watercrest Farm and other vehicles, people who use the road to get to, to get access to another road itself. And then in the summertime, the tremendous traffic by the canoe rental. They are ferrying people all day long throughout most of the summer months. And I'm not just talking about a little trail of dust behind your vehicle. I'm talking about a huge cloud of dust when you go down that road that floats in the air for hundreds of feet, you know, all the way up to your homes. Our house is actually about a tenth of a mile off the road, and it's, you know, the windows and the front porch is covered with dust. It's not just my home, it's many of the homes out there. Your vehicle's always filthy. Your tires need to be replaced more often because of traveling on gravel all the time. And aside from the road dust, there's a near constant state of having potholes, ruts, and rubboard surface that makes traveling on it not very comfortable. The county's response to this, and I'm not taking issue with Mr. Gill, he's, I guess, doing what he can on, there's only so much you can do with a gravel road, but it is, the response is to come out and grade it every so often, just dragging what gravel and dirt has been displaced and pulling it back on the main portion of the road, and that includes any litter that's been thrown, you know, thrown down. But it only lasts for a day or so, any repair that they do because of the constant travel that's on the road. I see that other roads in my area have been asphalted fairly recently. Massey-Holler Road is one. It was done this year. A portion of Smithlin Road was done several years ago. So both of these roads have far fewer residents. I've traveled down them than what we have on Smithlin Road. So my question to this body is, how do you decide when a road needs to be properly surfaced? In other words, what criteria do you use to decide, okay, this road remains gravel and this one gets asphalted? So that is my question to you.
Okay. I don't know in real recent history, but I know a bunch of years ago that they weren't able to get the 50-foot right-of-way for that road through there. I don't know that that's still the case, though, but I know at one time that was the reason that they weren't able to. And I think that even goes back to several previous road commissioners. But now, don't take my word on that now, but at one time, that was a holdup on it.
Yes, I remember. I've been to, it was some years ago, that I went to a road commissioner's meeting, and then they, they said they had to have that right-of-way. But I've traveled so many of the county roads where there is obviously not that kind of right-of-way. There's a, there might be a fence that comes right up within a foot or two of the roadway. So.
Not being the road commissioner, but this would be my suggestion for you. You can get a copy of who has signed the 50-foot right-of-way, then you'll know who hasn't. And I would go see those people that have not signed the 50-foot right-of-way and beg them to sign that. And I think you're going to see some progress on that road. I'm familiar with the road, and everything you said, I agree with. But if we can't get the right-of-ways, and that's totally up to those landowners, it's difficult for us to get it done. But I would suggest that you get the copies from Mr. Gill's office and see who hasn't signed, and see if they wouldn't do that for you.
Okay. My last question is, is every county road required whenever you pave a county road, that you have to get that right-of-way permission from every single landowner on that road?
Yes, ma'am. I don't live on a through-gravel road, but I live 2 miles, you know, to my house on a gravel road, but it's not the traffic you have, you know, it's because it would be a dead-end road. But I do know the things about a gravel road. But I would try that and see if we can't get you some results.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Any other new business? Okay. Commissioner Douglas, did you make a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Commissioner Bradford. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. We adjourn.